Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda, we have the Estle Springs renovation project.
Okay, just a real quick explanation of what's going on here. As you all know, there's major changes taking place at KD and quite frankly, I've been really aggravated over some of the issues that we've had over the last couple of weeks. And the problem that I have with it is that we're a week away from the bond sale and they decided now to start questioning some of the items that have been in front of them since March and April. So, I'm not going to be too difficult on them. I've been really aggravated about it, but I also know that we are undergoing a lot of change at KDE. And we've seen, of course, with the Commissioner leaving and the new Commissioner being appointed, Kevin Brown, the lead Attorney, leaving this week. I just think there's a lot of things happening right now at KDE. And I guess we should be appreciative that they've gave us an avenue by which we can correct this in what terms they see as problems now and move forward with this project. So, if you would look at your first page there, that is the, of course, I put the old agenda in there just so you know the difference. But if you go to this page here, this is the Estle Springs bid tab that we had at the last meeting. And if you remember, we took the base bid and alternates one through nine. And we decided upfront that we were not going to take alternate 10. So, it was already off the table. Since then, KDE has come back and said because of some of the issues within the old facility planning process, that alternate number six, seven, eight, and nine are not technically listed on the facility plan. And in the past, these things would never be an issue because most of them have to do with safety and security, which that's probably been my biggest issue with it. We're not spending money here to build statues or build some elaborate gymnasium. It's three times the size that it should be. These were mainly safety and security concerns that we had to deal with safety glass and security cameras and the parent drop-off to fix the issues that we have with safety there. And even the front entrance where we don't have adequate space for students getting off the bus and getting on the bus. But with that being said, there's no need to fuss about it. We've got an avenue to fix it. So, what I am asking for you to do and what KD has asked us to do would be that we need to rescind the original motion from the last meeting where we took the base bid and alternates one through nine. And then I'll walk you through what we need to do from that stage forward. And just so you know, when it's all said and done, the price of the project does not go up. The amount of the bond sale remains the same as it was at the last meeting. It's just that we're going to have to go about it a little different way. So, with that being said, I would recommend that we would rescind the motion, the approved motion from the last meeting, taking the base bid and alternates one through nine.
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we rescind the previous motion from the previous meeting of the base bid and alternates one through nine. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Now, as I originally said, when this first started, they had told us that only items eight and nine did not fit the facility plan. But after they had a meeting on Thursday morning, I got a call yesterday afternoon at about two o'clock that said, hey, we feel like we need to do the same thing here with alternate bid six and seven as well. So, right now, what we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to ask you and recommend that you would approve the base bid and alternates, alternates one through five. And that will bring the total contract amount for construction. The old BG1, which you have there in front of you, the contract amount was for $3,992,000. If you go to the new BG1, the contract amount now for the base bid and alternates one through five is $3,523,000. And that's reflected in the agenda there. And then I will tell you with the next, after you've made that vote, I'll tell you how we're, well, let me go ahead and tell you now. If you'll notice the old bid, look at the contingency, which is line item number six on the old BG1. The contingency amount there is $199,600. And every project that you do has a 5% contingency for any type of construction issues that they may run into. You know, they may hit a void in one of the geothermal wells and they might have to dig five extra wells or something like that. You never know what could happen with unforeseen stuff. So, now that we do not have alternates, or now that I'm proposing to you that we do not have alternates six, seven, eight, and nine, well, how are we going to get those paid for in the future? What KD has allowed us to do is take the amounts for six, seven, eight, and nine and add that to construction contingency. So, if you'll notice on the new BG1, your contingency for the project now goes to $668,600. So, that's the difference. When we went from 3.9 million to 3.5, all that additional money went into contingency now. So, the money for alternate six, seven, eight, and nine is now in the contingency of the budget. And that's what's going to allow for us to sell the bonds. And then, as we move forward with the process that they've laid out for us of reconvening the district facility plan, doing a finding, and we'll talk about that here in a minute, it allows us to move forward, do alternates or to basically do a, I'm losing it here, I'll come up with it here in a minute, change order. We will add those back by change order to the contract as time goes. And that's how they've laid the process out for us to do it. So, I just want you to see the money is still in the BG1. So, and when you look at the amounts, it's still four million, 742,000 is the total project amount. And that's the project amount that was on the old BG1. So, we're not changing anything. So, with that being said, and I felt like I needed to do that, so anybody that's listening to the meeting would also know exactly what we're doing here, I would recommend that we would now take the base bid and alternates one through five only in the amount of $3,523,000.
I make a motion that we accept that new bid. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, I think I pretty much then have already talked to you about the BG1. And the differences is the only difference is from the old BG1 to the new one is line item number one, which is total construction cost. And the reduction in the construction cost is now located in item number six, which is construction contingencies. And as we move forward with this project, we will be able to do a revision to the contract moving forward as we do change orders to add each of those alternates back to the project. Total cost of the project, four million, 742,306. You'll see how we funded over there, fund that amount. And I ask you now to approve the revised BG1 based on the last motion that was just made. And that's my recommendation.
I'll make the motion that we accept the revised BG1. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, now I've told you that KD has laid out a process by which we need to follow. I'm already in the process of contacting the local planning committee to try to set up a meeting for this coming week. Hopefully, that meeting will be this coming Wednesday at five o'clock if we can get a majority of that committee there. There's 20 members on that committee. So, we'll need to make sure that we get enough people there. KDE is working with us on a finding for Estle Springs. If you remember back earlier in the year, we, or back last fall, I think we made a finding for Estle Springs when at that time, I think you all may have just come on the board, when we thought we were going to move preschool also to Estle Springs. You remember, we did a finding and added classrooms, construction and stuff there.
the previous motion from the previous meeting of the base bid and alternates one through nine.
I'll say yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Now, as I'd originally said, when this first started, they had told us that only items eight and nine did not, um, fit the, the facility plan. But after they had a meeting on Thursday morning, I got a call yesterday afternoon at about two o'clock that said, hey, we feel like we need to do the same thing here with, uh, alternate bid six and seven as well. So right now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna, or I'm gonna ask you and recommend that you would approve the base bid and alternate, alternates one through five. And that will bring the total contract amount, uh, for construction. The old BG one, which you have there in front of you, uh, the contract amount was for $3,992,000. If you go to the new BG one, the contract amount now for the base bid and alternates one through five is $3,523,000. And that's reflected in the agenda there. Uh, and then I will tell you, uh, with the next, uh, after you've made that vote, I'll, I'll tell you how we're, well, let me go ahead and tell you now. Uh, if you'll notice the old bid, look at the contingency, which is line item number six on the old BG one. The contingency amount there is one mi- or $199,600. And every project that you do has a 5% contingency for any type of construction issues that they may run into. You know, they may hit a void in one of the geothermal wells and they might have to dig five extra wells or something like that. You never know what could happen with unforeseen stuff. So now that we do not have alternates, or now that I'm proposing to you that we do not have alternates six, seven, eight, and nine, well, how are we going to get those paid for in the future? What KD has allowed us to do is take the amounts for six, seven, eight, and nine and add that to construction contingency. So if you'll notice on the new BG one, your contingency for the project now goes to $668,600. So that's the difference. If, when we went from 3.9 million to 3.5, all that additional money went into contingency now. So the money for alternate six, seven, eight, and nine is now in the contingency of the budget. And that's what's gonna allow for us to sell the bonds. And then as we move forward with the process that they've laid out for us of reconvening the district facility plan, doing a finding, and we'll talk about that here in a minute, it allows us to move forward, do alternates or to, um, basically do a, um, I'm losing it here. I'll come up with it here in a minute, change order. We will add those back by change order to the contract as time goes. And that's how they've laid the process out for us to do it. So I just want you to see the money is still in the BG one. So, and when you look at the amounts, it's still four million, seven hu- or 742,000 is the total project amount. And that's the project amount that was on the old BG one. So we're not changing anything. So with that being said, and I felt like I needed to do that, so anybody that's listening to the meeting would also know exactly what we're doing here. I would recommend that we would now take the base bid and alternates one through five only in the amount of $3,523,000.
I make a motion that we accept that new bid.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, I think I pretty much then have already talked to you about the BG one. And the differences is the only difference is from the old BG one to the new one is line item number one, which is total construction cost. And the reduction in the construction cost is now located in item number six, which is construction contingencies. And as we move forward with this project, we will be able to do a, um, revision to the contract moving forward as we do change orders to add each of those alternates back to the project. Total cost of the project, four million, 742,306 dollars. You'll see how we funded over there, uh, fund that amount. And I ask you now to approve the revised BG one based on the last, uh, motion that was just made. And that's my recommendation.
I'll make the motion that we accept the revised BG one. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, now I've told you that, uh, KD has laid out a process by which we need to follow. Uh, I'm already in the process of contacting the local planning committee to try to set up a meeting for this coming week. Hopefully that meeting will be this coming Wednesday at five o'clock if we can get a majority of that committee there. There's 20 members on that committee. So, um, we'll need to make sure that we get enough people there. KDE is working with us on a finding for Estle Springs. If you remember back earlier in the year, we, or back last fall, I think we made a finding for Estle Springs when at that time, I think you all may have just come on the board when we thought we were gonna move preschool also to Estle Springs. You remember, we did a finding and added classrooms, construction and stuff there. Well, it's the same process. We're, what you all have to do as a board is you have to request that the LPC come back together and meet and consider a finding for Estle Springs. And what will happen in that finding, and KDE is helping us word that finding or get the correct language for that finding, they're gonna make sure that the items that's listed in alternate six, seven, eight, and nine will be added to our facility plan. And we'll bring that to the committee to discuss. And then they will have to approve that and tell you all that they've approved the finding and send it back to you all for your approval. So we may have to have another special call board meeting like the week of the fourth ninth or something like that. I'm not for sure the date. I believe it is the 10th, the week of the 10th, I think, is, uh, no, it's still not right. It's the week of the 11th. We might have to have a special call board meeting at then to consider their finding. But right now, the next step then is to work with the local planning committee. So basically, the motion is, is that you are requesting a finding and you're requesting that the local planning committee convene to consider that finding. And that's my recommended motion to you all.
I make a motion that the district facility planning committee can reconvene. And, um, we would like to request them to propose a finding for Estle Springs.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And again, so the public will know, anybody that wants to know, that meeting, we're trying to schedule it for this coming Wednesday at five o'clock. If that meeting does occur at that time, I'll have an agenda put out on Monday. And we'll post that to the website so anybody can see, uh, what's taking place at that, uh, committee meeting. And honestly, the only thing that can be discussed at that meeting, or let's say the only thing that action can be taken on would be that Estle Springs, uh, portion of the facility plan. No other action can be taken.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, um, SRO contract.
As you all know, after the last meeting, uh, it was requested that I meet with the city of Ravenna and, uh, discuss the SRO contract and to discuss, uh, us, how we move forward with that. Um, after that meeting took place, I can tell you that I wasn't able to be there because of some medical procedures on my eye. But, uh, our assistant superintendent, uh, Ms. Isaacs, uh, Dicky Arthur, our safe schools director, and Mr. Winkler, our high school principal, did meet with them. Uh, they felt like they had a productive meeting. Uh, when I returned this week on Tuesday, I met with Officer Gross. And, uh, we had a meeting just to discuss moving forward, uh, for the future. Um, we have put some corrective action items in place that we expect in terms of what we feel like our needs are as a school district. And we have set a review date for October 1 through the first period of that SRO contract. So based on that meeting and based on my meeting with Officer Gross, I feel that at this time, our best option is to continue that contract. Uh, I would ask that you all would go on record that we're, we're gonna continue that contract. Uh, usually we would approve it under consent. And originally, we'd wanted to have this meeting on Wednesday in case there was any action that needed to take place with that. But now we're within the 30-day window now of the contract being renewed anyway. But I still think it would be good for us to go ahead and say, you know, we're gonna renew the contract and we're gonna monitor it every three months to implement the corrective action plan that we have developed. And that would be my recommended motion.
I'll make the motion that we, um, continue our current SRO contract at this time and monitor it every three months.
Be quarterly, yes.
Quarterly.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And that's really all I have, except the possibility we may come back on the week of the 11th and, uh, have a meeting to consider the action of the local planning committee. And that will give us time to get that on the board agenda for the regular call board meeting, which is on the 21st. And hopefully, we're gonna try to talk to all of our vendors and everything and try to get all of our bills and stuff in and not have a special call board meeting at the end of the month like we normally do. We're gonna try to tell them they've got the deadline of having everything in. I believe it's the 15th. They've got the deadline of having everything in on the 15th, or they're not gonna be paid until July. And, and we'll fix it. Uh, we'll deal with it at that point in time, so that's it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? I'd like to call to order the Estle County School District Finance Corporation meeting.
Okay, as we got to looking at, as we got to looking at our, um, district finance, uh, corporation, uh, paperwork that was coming in on the bond sale, uh, we got the notice in that it's been a while since we've had a bond sale. And officers that are listed on the bond sale has to reflect the officers that have been elected by the finance corporation. Well, technically, we've not done that in a while. Because we've not sold bonds since the high school and South Urban project. So what we've done in the future is that I've told Felicia that every January now, that when we have our special call meeting to do our board elections for chair, vice chair and all that, that we would also every year convene, convene the finance corporation and elect officers at the same time. And then from now on, if we follow that process, we'll never sort of get caught in this. This is really a technicality because of our bylaws of the, um, finance corporation. And we need to just make sure everything's in order, is what we want to do here. So our, our bylaws or articles of the, in corporation says that we must have an election of officers. And I can tell you that probably in 99% of all school districts, the current board leadership is also the leadership of the finance corporation, which means the board chair is the president, the vice chair is the vice president, the secretary, of course, is the superintendent in both cases. And of course, the treasurer is the finance clerk. Um, but it does say that we have to have an election, so, uh, we need to follow that process. So, um, I guess the floor is open.
Okay, well, I would say let's make a motion, um, to keep our current board electives or, I guess I'm saying, our nominations. I would like to make the nominations for Rhonda as president. I guess Donna as vice president. Mr. Saylor as our secretary and Angie as our treasurer. Just keep it the same as our current board electus.
Okay, we have nominations in on the floor for each of those four positions. Is there any other nominations at this time? So I think we would need to have, uh, nominations should cease then.
So we want to vote as president?
Well, we would need a vote that nominations would cease at this time.
I'll make a motion that the nominations cease at this time.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
So then we would need a show of hands for each one of those. And I'll, I'll just sort of conduct the meeting because you are the voting members. So we need a show of hands that would support Rhonda Hardy as the president of the finance corporation. All those voting yes? It's a unanimous vote. Uh, for vice president, uh, a nomination, uh, the nomination was for, uh, Ms. Donna Isfert to be the vice president of the finance corporation. Uh, all those voting yes, raise your hand please. And that's a unanimous vote as well. You all have nominated me as the secretary. So at this time, everybody that votes, uh, for the superintendent, there will be the secretary of the finance corporation. And that's a unanimous vote. And last vote would be for the finance officer. Or in this case, the treasurer of the finance corporation, which would be Ms. Angie Howe. So all those in favor of Angie being the treasurer. And that is unanimous vote as well. So with that being said, then we have the election of officers, uh, for the district finance corporation. And as I said, we'll do this every January from now on and not get called in this. Uh, we don't, we don't wanna do anything that, uh, might cause an issue with the bond sale moving forward. That's all the business.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you all, and, uh, we'll be sure to post the, uh, meeting agendas for the LPC next week and the board meeting the following week. Thank you.